We're gonna give them a raise. Okay. Everybody who would like to sign up has signed up tonight to speak, I'm assuming, which is good. So it is now 6:30 on the nose and we're gonna bring this meeting to order. If you sign up to speak tonight, be sure and let me know because Sylvia, you're already on there.
Yeah.
But, yes, I saw it, thank you. So it is now 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM, and I call this Castle Hills Special City Council Meeting to Order and determine whether a quorum is present. Has somebody called Douglas? Oh, there he is. He blended in with the wall. Okay. And our first order of business is the invocation by Mr. Pinkston.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we're here tonight for this budget meeting and I just pray that your mind and just wisdom would just prevail in this meeting. God help us to just package this thing together, crunch the numbers in a way to take care of our people, our city staff, and to meet the priorities that you put into the minds and hearts of our council and to look forward to a brighter future, a vision for the future for our city. And I just pray that this budget would impact our city in a great way and give all of the council members and the staff who will be reporting and speaking and engaging the process to just have your mind for the best for our city. We love this place in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Tonight, we're gonna have the pledge by Ms. Laverne Jappett. Thank you, Laverne. Okay. Citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. I didn't see anybody signed up on non-agenda items. Robbie Casey.
Yes, I did.
Come on up.
Hi, actually, I'm Robbie Casey, 144 Cassiel Stride. Hello, everybody. I'm here just to compliment our security and tell you the importance that we keep it. And we need to add to them to help them rather than to take away. So no matter what you do with your finances, it's the citizens that need to be protected. And it's our police department, our firemen, all of our help that's there for us every time we need it. So let's not consider any takeaway from our security as the citizen of Castle Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Okay. Under "O Business," we are going to conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. Let's go ahead and open that hearing, Mr. Rappley, and then you will, and Ms. Laura, will be, I suppose, answering questions. So it is now 6:36. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll briefly go through a quick presentation before we open up to public hearing. What I wanted to do is obviously recap a couple of things that we've talked about in the last two workshops, which was in part of, you know, the overall theme of the budget, the maintaining of our city services, and the possible dollars that could be reallocated possibly to different areas, including, I heard council a number of times say, streets and drainage. Thank you, Captain. On this slide here, just kind of reiterating the point of the balanced budget that we submitted on August 8, 2018, the ending fund balance reserve for at least six months operations, current tax rate maintained, balanced budget, which supports exceptional citywide services, and this level to be sustained. At the time, during one of our workshops, the city council proposed a 2-cent tax rate increases revenue potentially of about $107,366. That's if adopted. Possible use of those dollars, again, street maintenance, drainage improvements, capital As we talked in previous workshops, reallocation of funds, this is in part a recommendation for reallocation of those funds in the general fund. Total available funds, $331,334, recommending to transfer that, those dollars, to the supplemental streets and drainage fund. This equates to 4.8% of the budget for reallocation. Reallocation of funds have no impact on services related to public safety, police, fire, and This slide is the table I showed last council meeting. We've made some modifications to it, and I'll just run down the list. We have two vacant and funded positions that we are recommending for elimination. The project manager, a position in streets. We also have excess fire department that's salary dollars that were in a previous budget, which was adopted and recommended by our previous city manager at the time. We are moving the COLA from 3% down to 10%, 2%, excuse me. Our health insurance rerate came in. We had budgeted 20%. It came in about $1488, and then we had a couple of non-participating employees, which actually were savings to the budget itself, at $16,000. City Hall improvements, we originally programmed then $40,000 to the general fund for improvements to the building. We, as staff and myself, are recommending those to come out of the seed fund moving forward to start what we would call a management, building management repair type fund, not necessarily fund, but a line item for dollars to be used for improvements for the, not only interior but exterior of the building, moving forward. We're also proposing to sell the 1998 E-1 truck. And in talking to Chief Dover, we believe that we could probably, on the market, get $35,000. The total surplus of the general fund being $346,334. As a result of having new legal services, which was budgeted originally at $75,000, the last two years have averaged about $90,000, so we increased this line item budget to $90,000. Plus, as our new city attorneys, the increase per hour for their services versus our previous city attorney has increased. So those are the reasons we actually propose $90,000 at this time. Recommendation, again, reallocation to supplemental street fund, $331,334. Again, 4.8% of the proposed budget available for reallocation. Again, next step would be next Tuesday night, second public hearing on the budget. This is where we would adopt the budget and adopt the tax rate. Mayor, I'll open it up to a public hearing on the budget.
Okay. All right. Counsel, did you have any questions? We'll go through two rounds. Do we get to, or do we open this up to the public? Oh, okay. All right. Anyone who would like to speak? You don't have to be signed up, I guess. So in case you are, George Booth, you're signed up to speak on an agenda item. That's number three, which is not a public hearing. But if anybody would like to speak during the public hearing, now's the time. Public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Sylvia Gonzalez, 103 Wickford Way, mayor, aldermen, and residents and employees. I'm very concerned about our streets and drainage. I know we had a tremendous amount of rain, and I know some people. Can you hear me? Some people are having water still get into their garage or their homes, and we need to be considerate of that. I hope that we can maybe raise some money or cut back on some of the departments so that we can put more money into our fund for our streets and drainage. It's really bad in some of our areas. My house is fine, but I know a lot of people that are having major problems. I appreciate you listening to me, and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Would like to remind everybody, you don't have to be signed up for this item, so if you would like to say, Bonnie?
Thank you. Bonnie Hopke, 111 Amerson. I guess to follow up on Sylvia's, I'm sorry, to follow up on Sylvia's point, I think, as I understood, that the project manager position was to oversee the street program. Is that correct?
It was.
I mean, I, my concern is if, I think we had issues in the past with someone not, sort of not being dedicated to overseeing what was happening, overseeing the contracts, overseeing the work that was being done. And if this is gonna be a push for the city, which it needs to be, I mean, I sat through last night's discussion when we talked about the drainage issues on Banyan, you know, Antler, West Avenue, and on and on and on through all the streets, and all the discussions that we've been having for all the years that I've been here, which is not as long as most of you, but if we take away somebody who was going to, that that was gonna be their job, was to oversee and manage those contracts and make sure that the city was getting what it paid for, that seems a little bit short-sighted to me. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate Mr. Rappley, all of the department heads, that a budget came forth that provides for the services that the citizens, that I and my husband, as citizens of this city, do value. And I appreciate that. I appreciate all the work that you all put in every single day and that you, you know, in adding the budget process into this, into your work. So just a couple of things to think about as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopke. Last call. It is now 6:49, and we will end the public hearing. And we will go to item two, discussion on the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. We will open the floor. George, Sylvia, and Frank Paul, you're still signed up on different items on this, so you will be called under item three. But this is discussion of item two, discussion of the city manager's proposed fiscal budget 2019. Mr. Rappley, did you want to say anything before?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, let's start on the left with Mr. McCormick. Mr. McCormick, did you have any comments or discussion on the items, please?
I have, I always have a question, at least one. Mr. Rappley, you indicated that you're gonna turn back the $16,000 for the digital marquee at the city hall. Is that because the money is coming from someplace else other than the general fund or because we anticipate that it will pay for itself?
Councilman McCormick, if you recall, that originally that was submitted at one point by council member Winger, and we programmed it into the original proposed budget. And since then, during one of the workshops, essentially it was pulled because Ms. Winger had mentioned it's no longer needed or in that capacity for having a digital marquee. So we took the dollars into surplus, thus that we didn't have to program it into the proposed budget.
Do we know whether a digital marquee is still possible, if it'll be paying for itself because of advertising?
It wasn't going to have advertising.
I'm sorry.
It was our understanding it was something we had to put in.
I can't hear you.
I didn't pull it because it wasn't needed. I mean, one could say it wasn't needed. The reason that I recommended it in the first place was because I wanted to see if we could join with the company that does our digital signs to see if they would build one at no cost, or, more importantly, if they could tell us how much we would be able to gain in advertising on it in the same way that Hollywood Park does. So I never intended for it to cost the city money, but rather, it could bring something in and could be built at no cost.
So this is still?
Until we know that, which we haven't had a chance because Mr. Rappley hasn't set up the meetings yet, until we know that, I didn't want it to be coming out of the general fund budget.
I understand. So we're still anticipating a possibility of a digital marquee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott, did you have any comments or anything? We'll go around a couple of times.
I did. I just wanted to clarify that right now, we have a completely balanced budget with all of our current positions that are filled, being covered with a 2% COLA, correct? With a balanced budget as is. And the, it's not up here, but the chart that I'm looking at that has the project manager, the street position, digital marquee, all those things, that after our balanced budget, we are looking at right now having a $331,000, well over $331,000, to decide exactly where we want to put it within our balanced budget.
You're correct, councilwoman.
Okay, so I just wanted to be very clear. We have everything covered, and we have a $330,000 surplus, so to say, or of money that we can allocate to place where we feel it needs to go. So we're not, we're not looking at being in a deficit, we're not. We're not looking at trying to find funds for anything other than, like, streets that need repair, drainage, that sort of thing, but we have $331,000 and change that, as a council, we're gonna discuss tonight, and then over the next meeting, to decide exactly where to allocate those final funds within a fully balanced budget.
Yes, councilwoman. And as you recall, again, on August 8th, bringing a balanced budget, like Mr. McCormick mentioned, the digital marquee, we had a number of things programmed in. We've gone through those over the last couple of meetings, removed, added it to a total surplus from that standpoint. You know, like last meeting, we heard, let's just keep the fire, the radios for fire, because at the end of the day, two or three years from now, we don't want to have to pay for the entire replacement of them. So that's why we're planning accordingly to plug those dollars in right now. And I think originally, one of the first things we had plugged in for, like, fire, was the bunker gear, which we are able to absorb in the budget and maintain that for equipment for fire department. So after, again, the multiple meetings we had, this is what we've come to for essentially a recommendation for the reallocation of these dollars.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we're, that everyone is clear that we do have a balanced budget with the staffing that we have now, with the funds we have now, and we have $331,000 to decide exactly how we're going to place that within our current budget and still be completely balanced with reserve and all. Okay, that's my, that's my only comment. I just want to clarify that we're just, basically, the only thing we need to decide to do is where to put this $331,000.
And that is the case. And again, I heard in hearing from council over those workshops that the priority is streets and/or drainage. So this is why the recommendation is to transfer to the supplemental streets and drainage fund to continue to have dollars towards streets and drainage improvements.
That's all I have for right now, but I'm glad we're gonna make another round. Thank you.
So if we're going to have discussion on the budget, I'm not inclined to take the project manager out. I agree with Ms. Hopke that if we're looking at huge drainage projects of 1.6 million, if we're looking at Antler, if we're looking at a CIP, and we have a history of having projects that have not come up to the level of standard of work product that we expect in our city, I think we would be foolish to not keep the project manager in our budget so that we can keep a mindful eye if we are really serious about engaging in a CIP plan with drainage and street projects going constantly. I also still feel strongly about leaving the excess salary in the fire department for a captain, for Chief Dover, and those are the, and I really don't think that we have allocated enough for attorney's fees for next year. We'd have roughly $80,000 that would go to our primary legal assistance, and that only leaves $10,000 for the extra staff over a 12-month period, and historically, we have a lot more than that in the last couple of years. So I really feel like that item is not realistic, and we will end up in a crunch with that one.
Ms. Winger?
I understand, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman, you know, with the project manager itself, I think if we currently had a program, and I say capital improvements program, infrastructure plan, that involves multi-year planning, and we were underway with projects within those, I think it would be a viable position. But right now, there's no plan yet that council has approved for the next five years to manage these projects. And maybe once council is, and come to a collective consensus on a plan moving forward, then maybe that position could be revisited. I assure it's a viable position if a plan is in place like that, because you're talking about managing contracts, managing projects, and then going back over to make sure that on the side of, that you're securing the side of the city, and you're doing a quality insurance portion to make sure the project's done right. So at one point, when we do have a plan in place that council agrees that we're gonna do for the next five years, I think it's a viable position to have a management type of position for those projects. Down the road, they may be able to visit where we can look at maybe having an engineer in-house instead of on-demand, possibly. So those are the kind of things we need to look at moving forward after this budget as possibilities.
Ms. Winger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rappley. First of all, it's required by law that we have a balanced budget, so having a balanced budget is no big trick. The problem is that we've had monthly finance reports that continue to show overspending in every department. And what that means is that money has to be transferred from other sections, which could include streets and drainage, to cover those expenses, much of which involves overtime. What we cannot do is we cannot transfer money that's already allocated to personnel into something else during that year. So that's one of the reasons that a number of us are recommending cuts in that area. As far as the project manager is concerned, a number of people have pointed out, we have had way bigger projects in this city in the past, specifically in '98 and '99, where we were redoing West Avenue, we redid Northwest Military, we rehabbed the city hall, and we built a fire department, all without a project manager, all because the city manager at the time was able to oversee it. That is, in fact, the job of the city manager, and we have a public works director who also should be engaged in that under the direction of the city manager. So what we keep doing, and what people are upset about, is that we just keep adding positions when there is no additional benefit. That's why that project manager was eliminated. I do agree with you that considering an in-house engineer, considering what we're spending on engineers, is a good idea. As far as the sale of the E-1 truck, I'm not exactly sure how we reached that figure, and, you know, maybe we'll get it, and maybe we'll get less, and maybe we'll get more, but the thing is, we don't really know what we're gonna get.
By my best estimates, after looking at trucks similar to it, that's on the lower end in being somewhat conservative.
That is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, let's hope that's correct or that we do better.
Absolutely.
Right, okay. The other question that I have has to do with the COLA, because we were originally told by our financial consultant that this is what social security was looking at. Well, in fact, it appears that social security may be looking at nothing, or at most 1%. And since we've generally gone with what social security allocates, I think we may need to lower that even more to be in concert with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Mayor? Yes?
Just one thing, Ms. Winger, again, on the financials we provide each month, I provided council a memo back in May, or June, I believe, that explained detailed the analysis of each line item, and we're not in a situation where we're over-budgeting line items. Last year, last night's financials, we were about 49% overall for our operating budget at seven months through. Now, if it says 80, 90, 100%, that's actually a good thing within a line item, that we're not actually in that situation. Overall, as is indicated in the financials approved by council last night, we're in pretty good shape for this operating budget.
Well, that's great, and I'm glad to hear if that's true, but as you know, I've been raising it in every meeting, every time we get the finance report, and that's the first time that, you know, you've countered that, so I sure would like to see the figures that indicate that's not the case. Thank you.
I'll be happy to provide it to you. It was in last night's packet.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr., what's his name? Mr. Rappley, in the recommendation for reallocation, you have, of all these items, except the last one, sale of the truck, they're items to spend, and if we're not spending it, that's a benefit. But here, we're selling something, and counting that as a benefit, how does that jive?
It's increasing revenue. That revenue line was increased by 35.
Because the hope is it?
So overall, that's a total increase.
All right, so it's not a reallocation.
The hope the sale is done as revenue in this operating budget.
Okay, so it's not a, it's a different type of budget item. It's not an elimination of something, it's an increase of something that was unexpected.
Yes.
Yes?
It was, yes, it was, we increased revenue. The other items were expenses we removed, so total, yeah, that's, yes.
Thank you. Now, this thing with the project manager, I want to agree in part with Mr. Rappley as what he feels we should have or have not a project manager. A history of the city can show that we have had a city manager in the past, Mr. Mike Shands, who acted as the project manager on many projects, and he was, there was excellent results, there were no complaints whatsoever from anybody. We've also had engineers as city managers with mixed results. So the head of public works should be considered to have this additional responsibility, is something that he or she should override or receive because the head of public works is out in the field all the time. These are just considerations. We can also hire a project manager as needed. Last year, a former city alderman knew of somebody that he highly recommended for this type of thing. And perhaps, if we don't have a city manager who can do this, which I hope we, I hope we find somebody who can do this that doesn't have the increased cost, that we can perhaps go to an outside person and hire as needed. The in-house engineer might also be a place to turn for that pool to get somebody as needed for each project. These are just my thoughts. needed for each project. These are just my thoughts. Until we need the project engineer at this moment, we need not have it in the budget. We can always amend the budget when it comes up as needed.
Yes, Mr. Gregory, I'm, again, not opposed to some of those considerations. I don't have a PE, so I would defer to someone that did, especially on those type of projects from that standpoint. So again, if we got a budget accordingly to, again, contract someone to help manage those projects, we can look at that aspect.
There are many ways to skin this cat, and so we'll hopefully find the right one for the time. If any surplus we have anyway, it seems to me we already have an ordinance that requires up to $400,000 of any surplus must go to street and drainage, can't go anywhere else. So it, anything above 400,000 can be put in our purse for rainy day fund, or anything like that. So it's, it's a question of, what do we do with the hopeful 400,000-plus? And I'm pretty sure we'll come to an equitable answer. One thing I wish, you might pass these out, or have this in the back for people in the audience to see, this basically is the rundown of all the various funds we have, the audited results every year. And it's a very good thing here, if you want to look for something very positive. We are always going to have a reasonably, not a lot, but a reasonable cash flow every year coming in for maintenance. We have a quarter of a million for street every year, from hell or high water. Pardon me. We have digital billboards, we have all these other different things. Isn't that correct, Mr. Mayor?
It is.
So we're looking probably at a half a million dollars a year, approximately, every year, for street and drainage repair. What I think what we're trying to do is to somehow, I don't know whether we'll ever get ahead of the curve, but perhaps get ahead of the serious projects that are life and death projects, that if project's not done, the increased possibility of somebody injuring themselves or dying exists. And to me, that's drainage. Pure and simple, drainage. And you've gotta have drainage done, a major priority, just in my view. As for the positions in the budget, I still have one or two more things in my mind to settle through, but I'm sure we'll come through with a reasonable budget in the end.
Thank you. Before I get started, Ms. Winger, you had a comment you wanted to make?
I did. I just want to say not to take anything away from Mike Shands, who Douglas likes to, you know, give a lot of credit to. We have had numerous large projects occurring in this city in the past, and as you, Mr. Mayor, have pointed out, we've had a lot of city managers here. As has been pointed out to me by people who've lived here longer than I have, David Seifert oversaw a lot of projects in the city when he was city manager. Dave McLaughlin, who I moved here when he was, oversaw the projects I just mentioned. And then Diane File oversaw most of the, you know, most recent street projects. So we have had other city managers who have been willing and able to do that job. Thank you.
Okay.
And I believe I'm in that capacity to manage those. I'm just deferring, again, the engineering depth that is required by a PE.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on hiring an in-house engineer.
Okay, the reason last year at the budget that actually proposed the project manager position was because we were having so many citizens' complaints about the quality of the streets that were being put in, and that there was not enough oversight. We had been hiring project managers to come in, and I went through all of the receipts for the previous two years, we were paying over $200,000 a year for project management services through engineering firms, and it didn't seem like we were getting quality project management through these firms if we were having so many problems and citizen complaints that were coming in about brand-new streets cracking, falling apart, curbs not being installed properly or having to be changed, silt being put down, filling easements, that sort of thing. So it looked to me like we were getting inferior services for project management by hiring it out through some of our engineering firms. And when I pulled all of the receipts out of the records and realized we were paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for project management that didn't seem like we were getting, to bring it in-house made sense to me from a design point of view, and a project point of view, and a construction administration point of view, and that's why I suggested that we look at bringing that in-house. And so we'd get more bang for our buck, and they would have skin in the game because they'd be working for the city, and they would report directly to the city manager, because our city manager is not an engineer, and he's not a project manager. And that is a very specific position when it comes to construction administration, someone who goes out and knows specifically whether the construction is being done properly or not, particularly when it comes to streets and drainage. So on another point, having to do with the drainage, which right now is an issue, and as Mr. Gregory has pointed out, is an extreme issue, and it's a life-safety issue, it makes sense that if we're not gonna do a project manager, that we go ahead and look at those funds, or possibly the funds that are currently accessed in the fire department, and go ahead and bring on assistant chief to the fire department. Because while we have these drainage issues, and while we have these high-water rescues that are needed during all of these rain events where we have high water, it makes more sense to invest right now in assistant chief of the fire department to go out and take care of these rescue situations. So to me, the money might be better spent there by shoring up our fire department, giving them that position that's required by our ordinance that we should have, an assistant chief, and protect our people until we get the drainage under control, have more safety built into our fire department, who performs these high-water rescues. So if we're gonna have them, which we are until we get our drainage under control, let's make sure we have enough people working with our fire department in positions, and then do training to make sure that we do not have a fatality. So I definitely think some of this money should be looked at going into that assistant chief position. And I have to strongly disagree with Ms. Winger's comment about COLA. I currently have up on my laptop my Federal Reserve, and it's for social security this year. At the end of July 2018, the COLA is trending at 2.7% for social security and federal retirees. Tomorrow, Thursday, September 13th, they will release the new Consumer Price Index, how it'll trend as of next month at the end of August. But at the end of July, it's trending at 2.7% COLA for social security and federal retirees. So I think her numbers might be a little bit off compared to what is out there when you research what social security is doing as of July. They'll have new numbers for August, like I said, posted tomorrow. And then, let's see. So that is, I'd say on that, I do not think dropping below 2% would be fair to our employees, particularly when social security is looking at 2.7 now. And if drainage and safety is an issue, which it is, then we need to shore up our fire department, make sure we have enough manpower there to handle any of those rescues until we can get that drainage fixed. Thank you.
Hi, Scott, just on the COLA, again, I understand from looking at the, the aspect that Ms. Winger brought up from the social security, and Laura had looked it up, too, that there was something she found, an article that said that 2% was a little closer. I've always, and I've checked with our, you know, my colleagues, my contemporaries in other cities, being city managers, to find out, again, because they're going through the same process of putting the proposed budget together, just to make sure we're in line. And again, 2% seems to be the median there.
Oh, I'm happy with 2%. I just don't think we need to go lower than 2% because compared to what we're seeing trending now, to go lower than 2% would not be what's happening nationally.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah. As somebody who receives social security, what I can tell you is that actually what we've been seeing in recent years has been a decrease in social security overall. We provide health insurance here. As you pointed out, we're going to have an increase, and it's not as much as we thought it was, and that's great news. But what happens in social security, and what happened last year, which was the first time there was an announced increase, which was 2% increase, there was no increase because it was all taken up by the additional cost of the health insurance that's taken off what you receive. So the point is, ultimately, there's no increase, and we're not taking that into account because we do provide health insurance.
Okay, before I get started on this, I want to say a couple of things about the COLA thing. I don't know, Douglas, jump in any time, that where there hasn't been a time where we didn't give above a 2% COLA?
Oh, yes.
Huh?
We did.
When?
When we had the Great Recession, we had, all salaries were frozen.
When was that?
That was in 2009, and then in, back in 2010, I think we upped it to 1%.
Okay.
But 2009, we froze it. In 2003, there was a proposal to freeze all increases until, because at the time I came on the budget that May, Mr. Shands handed me a note saying we were looking at a $900,000 deficit. And because of that, we froze everything until we got a better determination of how the year turned out, and it actually turned out we had something like a $25,000 surplus. So we had a look back, if my memory is correct. But we have had zero for at least one year that I remember.
One year.
I think in the future, you're probably seeing very low increases because you just don't have the ingredients of the inflation that we had in the 80s. You don't have that now.
Well, I want to iterate whether the COLA stays the same or it doesn't, something that I said last night. And, you know, there's, there's been rumor, talk, everything flying around, we gotta cut pay, we gotta cut services, we gotta cut employees, which ultimately would be services. We have to cut, 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 and then all of a sudden, we have a $330,000 surplus that we're gonna, surplus that we're gonna put towards streets and drainage. Well, since I'm not gonna run for election in 2019, I want to say you will not be able to nickel and dime this budget, this city, and our employees when what we need to do is pass a bond, a small bond. I've talked to Douglas about it, who probably knows more about drainage and streets than, than some, and take small bites with this thing, and not, not get our city into a situation where, where we're penny poor. And, you know, the COLA is what it is, whether it's 1%, 2%, 3%, whatever it is. But now, I get to say something, because I'm disappointed. And I'm very disappointed, and I'm sorry if this hits, if this hits anybody. But this Banyon project and our major flood areas need to be fixed. And I learned what a CIP was last night. They explained to me a capital improvement program, all those letters sound really good, capital improvement, an SH, I mean, a, a, one of those type of funds, too. And it doesn't matter what the, an acronyms are or anything like that. We know that we have problems in Banyon, and we have problems in Manton. And I've invited Ms. Winger, we're going to Austin, and we're gonna talk to TECQ, and I don't, I'm not sure why the engineer last night wasn't sure whether it was against the law or not. I'm not even sure what engineer's purpose in life is. Okay? All I know is that we spent $160,000 on Antler, and here we are, and admittedly, he says, well, you know, that's no good because it's over two years old. So I am extremely disappointed in the Banyon thing. We've got a situation there that nearly cost us a life this time. If you don't believe it, Dover, you can, you can show the film anytime when the bridge nearly, where the car nearly went under the bridge, the guy didn't get out. That would be one, one. The, I'm disappointed in the project manager, too, because we're not living in, I understand Dave Seifert was a great city manager, Mr. Shands, what can you say? These guys were fantastic guys. But before we go pinning labels on people that did anything, I want to notice all the, you know, this pastime when we got kind of away from that, and we put the hands in the city manager, and I'm not gonna name who, but we, that nearly ended up in a lawsuit. We've got cracks down there in Kermeria as big as the Grand Canyon, back when I had a motorcycle, it nearly threw me off. That would've cost the city a lot of money. So, I mean, we've got to, we've got to act smart in what we do. And whether we hire a engineer, which, like I said, I'm, I'm not sure what their purpose in life is, or we have an in-house, or we have a city manager, they've gotta know what they're doing, and make sure that we don't have a quarter of an inch asphalt base on East Castle in One, and 10 feet down the road, it's six inches deep, if you pull a core sample. And so, all I've got to say is, we've got, we've got problems. I saw Douglas's plan, and the only reason I'm able to talk about it is because it does feather with the budget. I've never seen a plan like that in my, that's a good plan. It's a good plan, it meshed in with thoughts from the past of our street and drainage program when we decided to concrete, and you kind of took it a step further. I'm lucky in that I'm the mayor, and I get to see what the next step is. You don't necessarily get to see what the next step is, because there isn't money there, and why talk about it if there isn't? But there is a next step. So I would hope that, that we would, in closing, that we would bring all this together, look at this $330,000, and say, oh, well, you know, you can fix sunflower with that. Might be pretty good. Let's fix sunflower with $330,000 and maybe dogwood, you know, or, or something like that. Or what we do is, we take this and we use it, use it in ways that will, will help promote what we're trying to do, and whether that be a project manager, whether it be an assistant fire chief, in order to, Dover, you were short this time, I know you were, with, with men out on the road putting those barriers up, and then trying to keep the dumb bells from, you know, going in the ditch, and when they did, pulling them out, and, and all that kind of stuff, Johnny the same. All I gotta say is, you know, it's gonna take a bond and not nickel and diming our poor departments to death. I wouldn't work here. God knows why everybody else does. I wouldn't. So, how about that? Skip?
Okay, I, I got a couple of points. With regard to the social security issue, yeah, it's true that, that the federal government has about a 2.7 going on, 2.9, COLA for social security. It's also true that the president on, on executive order apparently has frozen the compensation of federal civil service employees, at least that's what he's proposing. I guess it's a question of whether it'll be legal or not. One of the things that we have to consider is the fact that over the past 11 years, the actual cost of living, the CPI, has gone up very little, 0 to half, maybe three-quarters of a percent in every year. And I took the trouble to find out what difference that made over those past 10 years, up to last year. And if you multiply that out and figure what the increase is, we've actually increased pay over the past 11 years by 22, 22 and a quarter percent approximately, over the real inflation rate. In other words, everybody got a 22% pay raise over the past 11 years, everybody who works for the city of Castle Hills, because we paid every year, up until last year, 3%, notwithstanding that CPI and social security were only going up 0 to .1, .5, .7% in each of those 11 years. That distorted our pay system to some extent. And so now- And so, now, when we, we look at something like a 2% pay raise, I don't, I don't expect that we're gonna try to recover all that excess pay that we paid over inflation. But on the other hand, I don't think there's a need to try to keep up penny per penny with the Joneses down the street with social security, because we were ahead of them for the past 11 years as it is. As far as the project manager, yeah, we need a project manager. The thing that disappointed me the most about the Banyon project is that we looked at a piece of paper that said, well, it's gonna cost us $800,000 or $600,000 or whatever it was, it was a big figure, to figure out what we need to do to be able to bid this son of a gun. And we won't be able to do that until sometime after the middle of next year. So, their proposal wasn't even gonna issue a bid until sometime next, next year, June, July, maybe, if they got around to it. And I was just god-awful disappointed with the whole idea that we have to wait that long to think about what we're actually gonna do. I thought that was intolerable. And it wasn't something that I would be willing to put up with from anybody who was gonna do business with me. Now, that being said, I guess I'm hard-nosed, but that's the way I see it. I think that it's time to get, to get somebody else involved, another engineering company to put a little competition in the marketplace to see if we can get a decent price and a decent timetable, a schedule that we can work with. And along that same line, we have talked among one or, one or two of us about having a committee to develop a CIP. And I think that's essential to do before we do too much else. I think if we leave the money outside of the project manager's position, we have the option of using it for something else, or putting it back into a project manager position when it becomes apparent that one is necessary in the next reasonably short period of time. And I think that's possible to do, and I think we can, we can still do that and have, have some flexibility along the way. I'm not really, willing to jump in and have a project manager when my engineers outside, this outside engineers are telling me it's gonna take them almost a year to think about coming up with a bid. That doesn't make good sense to me. So, that's just kinda where I'm at on that. And as far as what the public wants, they want us to spend money on streets and drainage. That's what I've been told, and that's what I've heard people say here in the, in public hearing part of this evening's festivities. So, I'm inclined to think that we ought to spend that money on streets and drainage, however it is. I think at some point, we're gonna definitely need a project manager. No question about it. And I think if we can, that project manager ought to be in-house. But I think we have a little bit of flexibility and time to make a decision about that. Right, we probably need a bond at some point. And the only way we're gonna know how much that bond is and when we need to issue it is to have a decent, what do they call that thing? That CIP? What was that again? Capital Improvements Plan.
CIP?
CIP, yeah, right, CIP. Capital Improvements Plan that we can look at and say, well, we've got these items that we wanna do, we have so much money, we can get this done in this year, and this done in next year. But if we borrow X amount of money, we, we can do it this way. And we'd have to figure out when we're borrowing that money, just how in the world we're gonna pay it back. So, that's kinda where I'm at on that point. I guess I've really got any more questions for, for Mr. Rappley, unless Mr. Rappley has anything for me.
Mr. McCormick, you're kinda right on, on a number of things that you've said. Again, once we have an inventory of all the projects, we'll have a price tag to them. And that'll give us the dollar amounts that we need to look at, which directions for funding options. If we don't have the capacity with our funds, then we may have to go the direction of either borrowing or setting up a bond. Once we do have that inventory and list of projects and totals, I would probably recommend bringing in someone to put together the financial plan to see, again, what our threshold is on borrowing, and/or if the route is to set up a bond committee. Typically, the bond committee is set up by council members, and they select folks in the community. The, the bond committee prioritize those projects. They put them in categories like streets and drainage. And then, again, that's how the propositions go on the ballot for voting.
Well, I think it's been suggested that we, we should have a, a Capital Improvements Committee. And we should probably do that as soon as we can. And then shortly after that, we probably should look at a bond committee once we have some idea what the Capital Improvements Plan's gonna look like. That's kinda where I'm at on it. And thanks, Mr. Rappley, I really appreciate that. Next time, I wanna go fishing for compliments. I don't just wanna turn. Thanks.
You know, I talked to Councilman McCormick today, and one thing that was realized that I said, he didn't necessarily say it, but one thing that, that I said is, you know, we've got, we've gotta get past these political boundaries when we come to, it's very important that we have a, a committee, a CIP committee. And I asked him, I said, well, who, who should, who should appoint that committee? Well, the mayor should. No, wait a minute, let's let council do it. Well, Douglas and I thought of something a while back when we, when we went to deciding, before we got in, deep into the process on picking streets. What's it called? Starts with a C, Cartograph. And actually, although it's, it's pretty simple, it's been going on since the beginning of time. And what that is, it's a lottery. And, you know, that way, what we do is we, we decide by council and the mayor who will be on this committee and make sure that the names that go in the hat know what they're doing. And not, not to say that there's ever been anybody on a committee that didn't know what they were doing. I'm not saying that. But what I am saying, until we get past this political, well, if, if I, I guarantee you that if I did a committee, everybody, oh, look, the mayor, all of his boys are on that committee, or girls, excuse me, ladies, all the ladies are on, on that committee. And it's bipartisan. If Ms. Winger, or these, or Skip, oh, look! That's what's going on. And guess where we get? We get nowhere, is what we do. We fight for another two years, and then the other side wins the election, and then the other side will win the election next time. And here we are, 52 years later, still battling it out. So, Douglas and I thought of a deal a while back, we talked about it, and that was put our entries into a hat of qualified people who could be on these committees, and we draw them. It isn't the first time that's happened. You see it on the news all the time. The same guy that put the prisoners in pink pajamas in the tents, if you remember that. We don't have any prisoners to put in pink pajamas. But all I'm saying is, until we get past that, we're not gonna get anywhere. Well, you wanna do the drawing, or what?
No, I disagree with having a committee of people. That's the point of having a CIP and a project manager that manages it so it is completely out of the political realm. It's an employee that is employed by the city, that is managed by the city manager, that we are in charge of that, and the council oversees, and you've got people that have been hired to do this, and you take politics out of it. That has begun to be the problem with the streets and drainage.
But you can't take politics out of it.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think we're off subject here.
Off the, I don't think so. We're talking about the budget. We're, well, we're talking about the CIP and the project manager, but, okay, we're, we're off subject, so let's get back to the subject, which is the budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The purpose of a project manager is basically to oversee an existing project that has been agreed upon by the city council. No other purpose than that. So, in, I think we ought to make sure we know what we're talking about, we're talking about what a project manager's supposed to do. Going back to the budget, I've noticed Mrs. Scott has brought up several times, a violation of an ordinance that requires 20 people to be on the fire department. But Mrs. Scott, you voted for the 2018 budget, which had 19 people in the fire department. And I never heard you one time mention this ordinance. I'm glad you brought it up, but I never heard it at all. We've had 19 in 2015, 2016, 2018, and now 2019. The other times, we've had 20-odd people. So, let's not get tripped up over the number of people. The same number of firefighters are there, we're not reducing a single firefighter, the same number of lieutenants are there, all the people you expect to be out there to fight a fire, they're still there, they haven't changed. The same number of captains hasn't changed. The same chief. The only variable has been whether we've needed an assistant chief. And for one, two, three, at least three, well, for quite a few years, we went without. And you voted for a budget with one year that was without. I compliment the police department, mark this down, Johnny, that you drew from a pool of competent people, family of your four sergeants, and from that pool, you drew a lieutenant. Now, in many respects, that makes sense. You're not changing the strength of the force, you're not reducing it. You're actually adding experience to a position that you say is needed for whatever reason. And the cost is not in the overall $7 million budget, it's rather negligible. It's a $7,000 difference, but that's a very reasonable way to look at it, and I applaud you to doing that. I haven't come to a conclusion on everything in the administrative branch, which has gone from six to nine employees since 2009. And Public Works is basically, we've, general agreement on most things over there. So, I don't see that there's an enormous amount of, we're not, you're not gonna have any reduction of a service. It is a complete deliberate misstatement to think, well, the city, we're just gonna, you know, we're not gonna be able to get the firemen to bar fire, we're not gonna be able to get the EMT operator out there, we're not gonna be able to get the policemen to show up. That is a complete misrepresentation of the reality. That is absolutely false. There is nothing going to be changed, the policeman's still gonna be there, the fireman is still gonna be there, the EMT person is still gonna be there. I think we're close to 95% agreement on most things, frankly. And this is the around, rounding off the edges. The reality is this. We have plenty of people in this city right now, more than enough, I think, more than enough people to get the, get what the citizens want done. They wanna be protected, they wanna be served. We've got more than enough people to do that. I think we have maybe a few too many, but we're in the ballpark. We've gotta concentrate, we know we need infrastructure repaired. We actually had, we actually had a survey of repairs, for example, of what it would cost to repair alleys. And then, when we had the last bond issue, they actually were proposing to fix my alley to the cost of over a half a million dollars for my alley, which is more than it would have cost to have done my street. And I looked at that, and I said, isn't there any common sense going on here? Of course, you're not gonna do that. So, if I had to guess, I think it's a pretty accurate guess, I'd say we have about $8 to $10 million of drainage projects that have to be done. Not we want to do them, we hope to do them before I get to be a super senior, but they have to be done for safety's sake for the city. And I think they're probably about, and I think we, that's for drainage. For streets, I think we gotta do a lot more in-house. We talked about in-house. I think we ought to buy some of these machines that others, other cities have their own machines to repair their own streets. And technology should make the machines a little easier to do than they were 25 years ago. I, I see no reason why we can't spend some money to do that in the long run. I think we'd save a heck of a lot of money. Those are the goals we should be looking at. And that's where we should be marching forward. A lot of this is chipping away at the perimeter. And I think maybe because I'm the biggest person on the council, I get more chipping by certain people than others. But we gotta look at it that way if we wanna be better off next year, five years, 10 years from now, and feel confident we're getting what we're paying for, and to grow the pride of Castle Hills. This is a real gem of a city. Really is. Let's not muck it up. We have good services, we may have too many, we may have some fluff, get rid of the fluff, but we have fundamentally sound services. We have good people who work here. We may have a little too many, we may have a little too less. We'll figure that out. But don't make it as if the sky is falling if a few people who leave at this top point in time may not be necessary to achieve the goal of where the city wants to be. It's much easier if we're working together than we're trying to sabotage everybody on everything that we don't agree on because they supposedly presented. And we've got all the things to do well here. We have the people, we have the employees, and there's not a soul on this council that doesn't wanna have a better Castle Hills. I think sometimes we miss that goal when we start attacking people personally. I really do. We miss the end result. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, it's all, I'll be preaching.
You opened the door, so I just hope that at the end of the day, when we're doing this budget, that you keep our, keep our team in mind. And whether it's, maybe we could shift some positions around if we have to, or whatever it takes. But I, you know, I'm embarrassed when we're talking about doing away with some, some people in our, in our team members and, and not necessarily department heads that still have $330,000 left over. That bothers me. I have a lot of good services. We, there isn't a city, a town in this city, small town like ours, that has some kind of pickup every day, that I know of. Jump in, Douglas, if there is.
Yeah?
Yeah? So, every day, Rick's people are out there doing something. Whether it's picking up trash, whether it's picking up recycling, whether it's picking up brush, whether it's picking up, they're now in the business, I understand. I know, because you're hurting my business, of, of going out there and for, you know, Rick, Rick puts a dollar amount on some limbs or something like that that needs to be picked up, and they, they go out and they do that. So, anyway, I think we beat this up enough, but I congratulate you, Mr. Rappley, on the, on the balanced budget. And I would hope that when we get to the end of this, that we don't have any end rounds at the last minute to, to cut any employees. Anybody else?
I appreciate Mr. Gregory not wanting to name names, but since he did name my name in his speech as he got started, I would like to state the fact that, yes, I did vote for the budget last year without an assistant fire chief on it. But since it has been brought to my attention, since then, that it is in our ordinance, it had not been brought to my attention at that point, yes, I did vote for it. And had I been aware of it last budget season, I probably would've pushed for that position instead of the project manager, knowing that one is required by our code, our ordinance, and the project manager was not. So, had I had it to do over again last year, I probably would've pushed for the one instead of the other. But because streets and drainage are such an issue, and we were hearing so many citizens' complaints, that's where I was looking to save us money, more money to go towards the streets and drainage fixing by bringing that in-house rather than outsourcing it. So, thank you.
Ms. McLean? All I gotta say is I hope that everyone, oh, Mr., I would hope that everyone keeps in mind this small bond that we need, and not nickel and diming our departments and talking about getting rid of people to save $330,000. It's inevitable, and it's not gonna get any better. By the time Leslie and I get finished with it in Austin, I don't know, they may come down and pave the whole city, just to get us out of the Capitol. I don't know if I'd want us two in there together. I don't know if I'd want us two in there together. Thank you, everyone. Okay, let's move on. That was a discussion of the 2019 budget. And next, we're going to talk about the submission of the... Frank Paul, you actually were signed up. So come on up. I wouldn't want anybody to think I was giving you a special favor.
I wouldn't want any special favor. West Avenue, wait a minute. I'll wait till you come back, Mr. Mayor. Douglas, you made a comment about we shouldn't be attacking, shouldn't be attacking. And of course, then you made a comment about Ms. Scott. I can understand where this got lost in the maze. You tell us, have you been on council for 14 years? You didn't know that ordinance? I didn't know that ordinance in the four years because city manager didn't bring it to us, whoever the city manager was. Had he brought it to us, we would have changed it or abided by it, one or the other. That's my opinion. As you know, you and I voted together on the project manager situation. We voted against it. When you have, when you have a project of any kind, the engineers bill in a fee for project manager. Now, the way we ran into problems with the streets that we did over two or three years because the engineer was allowed to be the project manager. And when you have a project manager who's the engineer and you have problems with the streets, whose fault is it? The engineers or the contractor? So that becomes a real issue. I think, I agree with Mr. McCormick, that if we have a project, we ought to go ahead and enlist a contract person to handle that particular project and see what it's like. And then we can reduce the fees that are in the engineering that calls for a project manager. Now, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Winger mentioned West Avenue and Northwest Military. Didn't the state pave West Avenue back when we took it over in 99? Yeah, I think it was the state because they paved it and then they did it over to us. Northwest Military, of course, that's a state road anyway. So we wouldn't have, would we have, I don't know why we would have oversaw it. I can't disagree. I just question it because I don't know why we would do that. About a year ago, before things got a little catatwampus, our Public Works and three or four of the people who were on the committee, street committee, worked up a five-year plan. And that five-year plan, for some reason, didn't get taken care of, didn't get installed, didn't get action on. I think that we're sitting up here talking about things, including myself, that we're not that experienced on. And we have an extremely experienced person that we need to draw more information from. I'd like to address another thing. You talk about the streets machines. It's not that easy. I know several people went to Chavino Park and watched that and watched how they do their streets. Chavino Park, 12, 15 years ago, had a bond, just like the mayor was saying, had a bond issue. And all Chavino Park is doing now is pulling a trailer behind the pickup and they're sealing to keep maintenance of the projects. It's not a machine that's going to do a milling overlay or anything like that. We have two sets, two kinds of streets in our city. Number one, you've got the streets that have drainage problems. Until the drainage problems are fixed, until that street can be fixed drainage-wise, it's pretty tough. Let's take South Winston. That's a bad road. That's a bad street in front of Wayne Carter's house. So, but it wouldn't do any good to pave it. Well, you can do some milling overlays on some streets that don't have big drainage issues. And I think that personally, I think if you put together a committee like you were kind of talking about, I think it should be a mayoral committee. And I think he ought to be chastised if he does not get engineers that know the business and that know how to take care of it and come up with projects. And I think they ought to be working with Public Works manager. Rick knows more about the streets, about everything in this city that has to do with infrastructure. And I just think that you could move ahead and get a lot of information that way. So I agree that we are not have, we're not, I was not for hiring a Public Works, assistant Public Works at the time. Our Public Works director did not want one at the time. He felt the same way that I guess you and I do on that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I was the only person signed up for item number two. So we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number three. And that is discussion, submission of the Crime Control Prevention District, CCPD, adopted in 2019 budget to the City Council for review and schedule a public hearing. So that is an action item. We've actually, let's get a motion on the table in a second. We do have some people signed up for that.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Scott and Ms. McLean. Okay, there is some people signed up. Mr. McCormick, did you have anything to say? Okay. Sure, why not? Mr. Rapley, do you have a presentation or Mr., there isn't anybody signed up for the presentation. So were you prepared to do a presentation on the CCPD? Anyone over there in admin?
So can, before we, just to make sure we passed out the two pages for the crime control, it has not changed from the original proposed city manager budget. There's no changes. The CCPD approved the same amounts and dollars. So there's actually no change from August 8th.
Was that prepared for the packet that went out? Or did that come up here tonight?
It's the same, it was, all I did was add a column that shows projected ending. It's the same document that's in your proposed budget document from August 8th.
Is everybody prepared enough to discuss that? Or do we need to give you a few minutes to visit?
So you don't really have, I mean...
This is submission. It's not for discussion.
This is submission.
Mayor, just to point it.
You still have to decide.
Schedule a public hearing.
You just have to schedule the public hearing.
Mayor, just to make a point, again, it is a submitting of a budget. CCPD met on the 5th to approve the budget. Now it's in front of council. We're submitting it. Chief Seaman's submitting it as well.
So there's nothing to talk about? We're just deciding on a date?
No, and we needed to schedule the publish, we need to set a date and times where we can establish a public hearing so we can publish it because we need 10 days to publish it.
Okay. So there's no presentation?
Yeah, again, it's not changed.
And by the time the CCP board finished, I think on the 5th, we still needed 10 days, so we couldn't get it on the 18th agenda.
No problem. I'm sorry, Ms. Scott threw me off, so it's her fault.
Mayor, we could even do, I mean...
It's a joke.
If, correct me, Chief, that it can be done in 45 days. You can bring it to the first meeting in October to approve the budget if you want. Or you can establish a date after we approve the budget next week. At some point, you can schedule a special city council meeting to approve the budget. It's up to council as an option.
CCPD budget?
Yes, CCPD.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
That we put, that we scheduled the public hearing for the CCPD adopted budget for 2019 for our regularly scheduled city council meeting on October 9th.
Okay. We have a motion for October 9th. Do I have a second on that, please? Mr. McCormick seconded it since there's no, I guess there could be discussion on that as far as the 9th is concerned. Anybody have a problem with that?
I think I would suggest that we not do it during the ready, ready, regular city council meeting, that it precede the city council meeting just in case that the council requires a joint meeting with the Crime Control Prevention District if we...
Would you like to...
I'd amend my motion to state that instead of being in conjunction with the CCPD or the city council meeting, that it be prior to as a special city council meeting. Or however it needs to be, however it needs to be phrased, that we meet on the 9th and it's a special...
Don't we have a meeting right after the National Night Out?
No.
No, 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 no. You can't schedule something if you're going to want to have a joint meeting. You can't do it all on the same date. So that's the point that Douglas was making.
I thought you were saying do it before the council meeting.
He is.
Oh, he's saying before, but not on the same date.
If it is done on the same date, it can be before.
We have a meeting before that on, we talked about it last night. What was it? It was right after the National Night Out and we scheduled it on the... Okay, so we have a meeting on the 4th at 7:15. Do you want to move that up to 6:30? Sure do. Okay.
Mr. Rapley, what is the latest date that the council has to approve the budget, the CCPD?
Forty-five days before January 1st. We've got, we've got time.
We've got plenty of time through early November.
So it must, no later than the 45th day before the date of each fiscal year begins, the governing body that created the district shall hold a public hearing. And only if the governing body rejects the budget, then you'll have to hold the joint hearing. So first, you just need to have that public hearing.
Is there anything that says you cannot, if it's rejected, you cannot hold a joint meeting that day?
You don't know that. You're not going to know that.
I'm just saying, if we...
It doesn't prohibit that. It would be a scheduling issue. You'd schedule a tentative meeting.
Or we could schedule it and then say it's not needed. Simply have it there just in case.
First of all, we've never ever had a, we've never ever had anybody show up for a hearing on CCPD. Second of all, that I know of, we've never not approved it. Okay, where was I? I was in Italy, that's right. Yeah, I do. I just want to see if you're awake.
The act, the item on the agenda today is to schedule a public hearing only for this item and not necessarily for a joint meeting.
So my motion was to schedule the meeting, the public hearing for Tuesday, October 9th. That was my motion.
And I will second that.
Okay.
Could the mayor call this meeting at any time he wants to within, what is it? Five days or whatever it is? Got to post it.
Three days.
If we want to front load this into a council meeting, we can.
The idea again is that we have to publish 10 days out. So whatever date is decided, we have to publish it 10 days out before the public, yes.
The budget for the CCPD has to be 10 days out.
The publication for the hearing.
The publication for the public hearing. So if you set the date in advance, then they can go ahead and publish for 10 days and then the citizens can come and speak on the matter.
Why don't we just do it in September?
Got to make sure we have enough days with the paper.
We've got to have a 10-day notice.
I don't know.
So we'll be looking, presumably if you got it to the paper today, that'd be the 22nd.
Yeah, but we have to have 10 days before.
I think October the 9th will probably work just fine. If it runs too to form and nobody shows up for the hearing, I don't expect it's going to take a lot of time.
Why don't we just do it the night of the evaluation that we're doing, Mr. Rapley?
Because the court meets that day and we don't know when they're going to...
What's wrong with that? Yeah, but how long is it going to take to evaluate him? Will he be all night? When was the last time the court was here till 7? Tina?
Last time.
Last week.
Last court.
What time? What? What about before that? Was that a weird time? Was that a weird time?
I know, I was here till 7 when I served on the court one time.
God bless you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order...
God bless you, Bonnie.
Point of order, we've got a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing on the 9th of October.
Okay, and we've got a second. All in favor?
9th, the 9th is a Tuesday.
Tuesday, regular council meeting.
Regular meeting next month.
During, during the meeting. Sure, we'll call a public hearing during the meeting on the 9th. No, she made a motion. And a second.
And we just had a vote of four.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, four to one. It's on the 9th.
Thank God. I think we should have had, we should have had our public speakers in there someplace, Mr. Mayor. I think we blew it.
That's all right. We can always pull it and then we can talk about it later.
There was also citizens to talk about that. Due to the fact that there was, all it was was a submission, I don't see there was anything to talk about. Is that correct, Paul? What would a citizen talk about?
The date and the review and scheduling a public hearing on the matter.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would open it, I would, whatever my, the proper thing is I need to say to, if there's a citizen that wants to talk about the scheduling of the public hearing, I would support that.
Okay, she was the person that made the thing. Sylvia, you're signed up. No, it says submit. I wish somebody would make up their mind because I was told it was just for submission. And she wanted to have a presentation. There wasn't a presentation. They weren't ready for a presentation. And so we were scheduling a public hearing, which we talked about for 15 minutes. And here we are. Sylvia, go ahead.
Sylvia Gonzalez, 103 Wickford Way, Mayor Nalderman's, employees and residents. Can y'all hear me? Okay, I'm on the CCPD committee. And yes, we did vote for that budget. However, I think, first of all, I do want to say that we have a wonderful police department here. Feel very safe and so happy we have good police here. We did look at the budget, you know, that was offered, but we didn't do as much research, I think, as we should have. I did contact Bear County Police Department, I mean Sheriff's Office. And they said that normally they don't change out their cars until they have 100,000 miles. And they were, I think the chief was recommending changing all of the cars. And some of them, you know, have what, 36 or less than 36 and maybe a little bit more. So we thought possibly we could go one more year without replacing all of the cars. And I know they do a fleet price. I have a relative that has a security company and he bought 10 cars. And then later on, he bought one car, then two more, and he still got the fleet price. And this was a different year, you know, the following year when he did this. So it shouldn't be a problem. I also contacted the police department. And the gentleman I spoke with told me they definitely do not change out the cars at 36,000 or even 40,000 miles. I just wonder also how they decide which cars to buy because there's a lot of information on the Consumer Report that provides, you know, cars that have less maintenance, you know, and things that... that provides, you know, cars that have a less maintenance, you know, and things of that nature. So I wanted to discuss that also. I thought that was important. We did vote on it, but I think it was premature. And, uh, we just need to be smart about how we spend our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Um, George, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Council, George Booth, one-two-four Dogwood. I too am on the CCPD Board, which is Crime Control and Prevention District, for those who don't know. It's funded by the sales tax, one-quarter, one percent is how the crime board gets their money. And we buy the, um, vehicles and equipment for the police department. It's not taken out of the general budget. Uh, I wanna reiterate what Sylvia said. I think it was a little premature that we voted. We had several new members on the board. And so we were presented with the budget and we had to decide right then and there, um, about the budget. And I think if we'd had more time, we could ask more questions. We didn't have the maintenance records for the vehicles. And so like she said, we have several vehicles that have low mileage. Those are highlighted. Unit number one, two, three, and seven. The first three are Explorers. They have less than thirty-six thousand miles. And unit seven, the Charger, has, uh, forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen miles. Most people on the board, in fact, I think I'm the only one that got a copy of this, so they didn't have information to really make sound decisions. Maintenance was an issue that Chief Seaman's brought up. So I stopped by a, uh, local, uh, repair place and asked about it. And they told me that labor was a hundred and forty-five dollars for, uh, front and back brakes and a hundred and twenty dollars for the, uh, brake pads, which is a little bit more expensive than your personal vehicle, which naturally, police vehicles are used a little bit more aggressively than our own. Rotors cost about two hundred and twenty dollars from Ford for the original rotors. Aftermarket's about a hundred and twenty. And if you turn rotors, if any of y'all know about maintenance, you can, uh, often save a rotor by turning them, and that costs a hundred and twenty dollars for all four. The issue is that if the vehicles aren't regularly maintained and inspected, you're gonna have to replace rotors, which is naturally a lot more expensive. So my suggestion is that, one, uh, I have requested, uh, to see the maintenance records, but I haven't received that yet. I request that on Monday. And that y'all at least review those records before you're making your decision, because I think these four vehicles, since they have so few miles in three years, are good not only for one year, but possibly two or three more years. Thirty-six thousand miles, if you double that, it'll only be in the low seventies. And so I think that we could get more use out of the Explorers, since I believe it's just the sergeants that are using those. Also, I noticed that at the last zoning meeting I went to, it was videotaped. That wasn't the case for the crime board, and I think it should be videotaped as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Mr. Rappley, can we, uh, talk about videotaping the CCPD Board? Shouldn't be a big deal, should it?
No, sir, and if, based on schedule, I'd recommend that we had it in here. We have the capability. But if not, uh, like we did two weeks ago, um, when there was a board meeting in here and meeting in the community room, that we had the ability to, uh, video it.
It's a great idea.
It's not a problem.
Okay. Who's the chairman of that board now? Robert Riley, good, okay. All right. Well, uh, thank, thanks for not saying anything about the date, so we don't have to back up on that. The ninth. We're gonna work it into the, uh, meeting somehow. Okay, we're gonna move on to the fourth here. Item, which is announce the date and time of the meeting to vote on the two thousand nineteen fiscal year budget and two thousand eight tax rate. Eighteen tax rate. The government body will consider a vote on the Castle Hills fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget and the two thousand eighteen tax rate on... This says September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen at six thirty. Ms. Winger made a so-move. Is there, uh, have a second on that, please?
I don't think it's an action item. I think it's already been set.
Okay. All right.
It says announce.
I'm sorry?
Announce and set, okay.
Mayor, y'all will need to take action to set the matter.
We don't have to?
You will need to.
That's what I thought.
Then I'll second.
So Ms. Winger...
Draw the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Winger, for reiterating that. Ms. McLean? Are you seconding that item?
Well, she just withdrew the motion.
Why'd she withdraw it? Because, uh, didn't you just say we had to vote on it?
We do have to vote.
Yeah, who writes this stuff?
Yes, the government body needs to consider a vote to set it for...
I thought, I thought the point was we had already voted on it. The, this date was already set previously.
When did we vote on that?
Um, we voted on it, uh, in August, yeah. We voted when, we were given the dates and we changed the date from the eleventh to the twelfth for the first hearing.
Does it hurt to vote on it twice, Paul?
Then we voted for the twenty-eight.
No, I would recommend you do so.
Okay.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it hurts to vote.
We already have a, Ms. Winger, do you still wanna reiterate that, 'cause it's not gonna hurt to vote on it twice?
What, do you want me to reiterate the motion? So, so I move, I move to approve the, um, date of September eighteenth at six thirty P.M. for the, um, fiscal year budget and twenty eighteen tax rate.
Any second? Thanks. Douglas, all in favor? Thank you. It is unanimous. Okay, this is announcements by mayor and council members. We'll start on the right this time, Mr., uh, Gregory.
I have no announcements.
Ms. Winger?
No announcements.
Ms. McLean?
Please come out to the meeting next week on Tuesday, the eighteenth, for the public hearing and, and let your voice be heard regarding any, um, regarding this, the budget.
Ms. Scott?
Ditto.
Mr. McCormick?
This is probably the single most important opportunity that the public has to come and express an opinion to council that really makes a difference. This is the one time a year, if you're gonna come out at all, you should come out and let the council know exactly what your thoughts are about taxes, about spending, about whatever is important with regard to the budget. So please do plan on coming out next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. The other thing I would like to say is don't forget about October second. Uh, that is National Night Out. We're gonna have another record night. Our police and fire go around to each house. And, uh, this year, I'm going to have a, uh, little party in front of my house. So I'm gonna wait and tell, you're gonna wait and see what the little surprise is there. But I'm inviting all the restaurants, uh, in town to actually come out, and then I'll have some too. And then, uh, uh, there might be something, something else there for everyone. So I invite everybody to, uh, participate in National Night Out. It is important. And with that said, uh, in our traditional way, Mr. McCormick?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.